To order, we'll begin with the pledge of allegiance.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation in the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to our last meeting for March for the Minnehaw County Commission. We have March showers bringing April flowers or something like that. So we have meeting documents on the end by Commissioner Heiburger. If anybody would like to review them and avoid embarrassment, silence your cell phones. And if you need a listening device, Carol or Craig are around, they can get you one. So we will move on to routine business. I need a motion to consider our agenda, to approve our agenda.
So move, second.
Motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And now we'll move on to our meeting minutes for March 16th, 2021.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Bills to be paid in the amount of eight hundred and ninety-one thousand forty-nine dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Pay the bills. Second.
Comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. We have no reports, but we do have personnel actions. I need a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
Routine action?
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries. Good morning, Carrie.
Good morning, Carrie Dever from Human Resources. I have a request today to convert the Finance and Budget Officer position from part-time to full-time and to approve immediate recruitment. Most of you are aware that this is Kim Adamson's vacancy, and we're anxious to get started with that process to allow some overlap.
Motion to approve? Second.
Motion is second. Any comments, questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Alrighty.
Mr. Chairman, I noticed that Shannon Schultz is on the, or that's the next thing. He was at our meeting last night, kind of over and above the call of duty for the Highway Department to talk about our, well, one of our items.
Okay.
Just compliment him for that.
You're looking further ahead than I am right now, Commissioner.
I know it.
Okay.
Again.
Abatements recommended for approval. We have none. Notice and requests. We have one for the, to authorize the auditor to post notice of hearing on April 6, 2021 to consider a proposed supplemental budget. Kim Adamson, is Kim here? Kim coming in? It's an annual thing that we do, just to clean up last year's budget process, so I don't think we-
I make a motion to approve the auditor to post notice on the hearing for April 6 for proposed supplemental budget.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. And next one is authorize auditor to publish requests for proposals for comprehensive institutional food services and technology services for the Minnehaw County Jail. Warden Mattson, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is kind of a two-part request in going through our process. Speaking with Eric Boge, we, there's a statute in there where the commission would have to make a written determination that the use of competitive sealed bids is not advantageous to the county for this procurement of a contractor. And it's drafted as an RFP. The reason why is because it's not just food service. Over the years, we've transitioned from food service and commissary to needing kiosks for commissary orders. And along with that is inmate email, inmate grievances, inmate requests, medical requests, medical grievances. So there's a big technology piece that goes along with this as well. Along with that is the accounting program that's used for the commissary bookkeeping, so to speak. Every inmate has an inmate account, and we have to keep that accounting record pretty solid. So I don't know if Eric wants to add anything to that, but-
Is this new, or is this something that we do every year or every other year?
So we're approaching our last, we're on our last extension for our food service contract. And over the years, all these things have been added to it because CBM and then Summit have been able to provide those services. I imagine Summit's a national company, and I imagine other national companies are doing the same thing.
Questions, comments? This is basically a request for proposals for the service, so it'll be coming back once the bid is awarded, I imagine.
Right.
Correct. Okay. Alrighty. Need a motion?
I would make a motion to authorize the auditor to publish the request for proposals for institutional food service and technology services.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Just handed a note. If we want to back up a little bit to the post the notice of hearing for proposed supplemental budget. Kim's outside. Kim, did you have some comments you wanted to share us, with us? Thank you, Warden.
Thanks, Warden.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kim Adamson from the Auditor's Office. We're simply asking for permission to post the notice of hearing for a budget hearing to be held on April 6. You've been provided a copy of the notice, which shows that supplements in the amount of one million, one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars and seventy-seven cents are requested in the general fund and two million, five hundred and seventy-six thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two dollars and sixty-two cents in the special revenue funds.
There should be some sort of activity that says, if you retire before this is done, you can't leave.
I think this will all be taken care of by then.
Not if we don't approve it.
Are these numbers significantly different than past years, Kim?
They are significantly different in the special revenue funds, specifically in the Capital Projects Fund. Last year, we've carried over, almost over eleven million dollars for the jail construction. And this year, we're down to just another six hundred thousand remaining to be completed on the jail project. Otherwise, the supplements are all pretty consistent with previous years.
Alrighty. Thank you for the update. We've already had a motion and a second on that. I see Eric jumping up. Did you have something?
I just want to give one word, have this motion. I'd like to manage your motion slightly more true.
Oh, okay. So we're gonna have to reconsider the publish request for proposals for the comprehensive institutional food services.
Commissioner Karski, Eric Boge, Assistant State's Attorney. I just want to make sure pursuant to, get the right citation here, 518A6, that your motion actually includes that you've determined that the use of request for proposals, or that the use of sealed bids, excuse me, is either not practical nor advantageous, so that we're in compliance with the statute.
So what did Gerald propose?
I put that in the motion, so if I missed it, I'm sorry.
You didn't.
You didn't hear it, because I didn't say it.
So we would have to consider an alternative motion, then?
Well, either that or a separate motion that you're actually finding. So it could have been a double-barrel motion to begin with, or if you want to just add a second motion now that you've actually made that determination. Otherwise, you're supposed to use sealed bids instead of the RFP process.
Can we use, do an amendment to the original motion?
Sure.
Okay, so I'd make an amendment to-
You've determined that the use of competitive sealed bids is not practical or advantageous for the county.
Make it-
The Warden's presentation.
So we're gonna amend our original motion.
You might have to repeat it again. My amendment is to-
I think Olivia's got it, so-
Okay, we've got it. And I need a second then.
I'll second that.
All right. Motion and a second to amend our, our first motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion. Garry's, thank you very much. And that's why we have Legal sitting in the room with us. Planning and zoning notices. There are none. Petition for compromise lien, there are none. We do have an opportunity for public comment. Is anybody here that would like to address the commissioner? Lot of people in the room, bigger than what we've normally had, but I don't see anybody jumping up. Jason, are you here for that? No? Okay, okay. All right. We'll close public comment. Onto regular business. We'll consider a resolution to appoint a designee authorized to request wildfire suppression resources and to obligate county funds for reimbursement of resources beyond those provided at no cost to the county. Like that part. Jason Guerman.
Hi, Jason Guerman, Minnehaw County Emergency Management. I'm here to data present this resolution for you to designate the Minnehaw County Emergency Manager as the designee to request that resource if needed. Rural Fire, I took a look at this and thought that was something that we may never use, but it's not a bad idea just to have it. And some of you are quick to point out that since I've taken over, a lot of odd things have happened, so. So it's, it's something we probably wouldn't use, but it's just good to have that asset there if needed. Other counties are kind of following in the same suit, so.
Questions? I guess the only question I have, you know, and I agree, expect the unexpected is a good policy, but it says to obligate county funds. Is there a limit on that? Or when we say we're obligating county funds, is that a blank check?
No. This is, they provide up to six people and two apparatus, whether that be air support or trucks. And that's, that's done at no cost to the county. If it would become maybe more of a, where we request to have more resources, there may be a cost to the county.
Okay. I need a motion and a second if there is no other questions.
Make a motion to appoint a designee authorized to request wildfire suppression resources, blah, blah, blah.
And a second?
Second.
Who is that designee?
The Minnehaw County Emergency Manager. We thought about listing me specifically, but in my absence, whoever the emergency manager is could also do that. So we put it as the emergency manager. That way, we don't have to come back and do it again if, if I should ever leave.
Call the roll.
Bar?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much, Jason. We now will consider a motion to declare three Highway Department vehicles as surplus and authorize, we have two different motions that we're gonna have here. Donation to the fairgrounds and the transfer of two vehicles to the JDC. So Shannon, go ahead.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Shannon Schultz, Assistant Highway Superintendent, acting as the Highway Superintendent. So what have you before, what you have before you today is just a kind of a housekeeping item. JDC has been in possession of two of our vehicles, 2017 GMC Yukon and a 2010 GMC Yukon. Listed in the memo is the estimated values at the time of possession to the JDC. And in compliance with our Policies and Procedures Manual, the process is to transfer title. And for the company or department transferring the vehicles, it gets reimbursed for that vehicle. So really, this is just a housekeeping item to transfer our title and, I guess, direct those other departments to receive funds. And I guess, there's a third one on here. It's a 2002 GMC. It's a one-ton truck. It's been used by the fairgrounds for quite some time, and they're enjoying it. The declared value is kind of an estimated value, but it has been fully depreciated. And I just want to recognize that the fact that we do understand that COVID has been taking a toll on the fairgrounds operations. And so we have no issues having a declared value of zero because of fully depreciated, and then making that donation to the fairgrounds.
Okay. So I'm gonna look for a motion first on transferring that vehicle to the fairgrounds.
Do we have to have a motion to surplus first?
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second, and call the roll on this transfer at no, no dollar value.
Can I ask for a clarification? Was it your intent to ask a question or make-
I was asking a question, but I will make a motion, because I think we have to declare all three of these surplus first. So I make a motion to declare all three vehicles surplus.
Second.
Okay. So we're declaring the vehicle surplus with this motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That's a roll call vote. Okay.
So Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Bar? Aye.
Aye. So these vehicles are now surplus. Now we're gonna look for a donation with no dollar value to the fairgrounds for the one vehicle.
Make a motion to don, to donate the 2002 GMC 3500 to the WH Lyon Fairgrounds.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Bar?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye. Motion carries. Now we have a transfer of a 2010 and 2017 GMC Yukon to the JDC with the funds for these vehicles to be transferred back to the Highway Department. I think we can do that all in one, consider it all in that one way.
That's my motion.
Second.
Call the roll.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Bar?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much, Shannon. Alrighty. Move on to a few presentations today. We are going to begin with a LifeScape presentation. Jessica Wells, good morning.
Good morning. I appreciate the opportunity to tell you a little bit about what's happening at LifeScape. I have had the pleasure to present to you in the past, a few years ago, so thank you for inviting us back. So some, a little bit of history about LifeScape, and I'll find the mouse or the arrows. Okay, here we go. We start out as Cripple Children's and Sioux Vocational Rehab. In 1948, Cripple Children's broke ground here in Sioux Falls, up on 26th Street, across from the VA. And we currently support over four thousand children and adults across South Dakota. We've got our Person Supported MAP. We do support folks in 62 of South Dakota's 66 counties and work with 40 different school districts across the state. Part of our services are a small children's specialty hospital. It is predominantly for children being supported in some of our full-service hospitals to receive their care for rehab and increasing their independence once they return and keeping them close to home. There are, it's licensed for 18 beds. It is licensed by the Department of Social Services and overseen by the Department of Health. We also have an intermediate care facility, which is our children's residential program here, also located on 26th Street. We are licensed up to 96 beds, but we are actually only support about 60 to 70 children in that program because of constraints in the building, the current building, being born in the, or being built in the early 1950s. The needs were very different in the 50s than they are for the children that we support today. And we currently have 17 children on the waiting list to get into that service line. Another area of our facility is our specialty school. This is, we provide not only school for the children that are in our care residentially, but also for children who live at home and come in for that specialty school services. There are 91 children currently in that program. It is licensed by the, and overseen by the Department of Education. We also have our outpatient clinics. You'll recognize one of those on 18th and Grange. That is our outpatient center. We have occupational speech and physical therapy predominantly in that facility. We also have one out on West 41st Street. It's our Autism and Child Development Center. I'll talk a little bit more about that one. And we have a facility in Rapid City and in Sioux City that provide those outpatient services. It is overseen and licensed by the Department of Social Services and Department of Health. It's under our hospital license. Another piece of our organization is Rise Custom Mobility. You may recognize this as rehab medical supply. We offer orthotics and prosthetics, seating and mobility. We have some of the very best in the country for seating and mobility. We're very fortunate to have four technicians that are licensed in that area. And we recently had a story on a little gal that had a prosthetic arm. She's eight months old. So fabulous to make an impact in individuals' lives to help them be more independent. We support 40 different people every day that come through that service line. Our Child and Autism and Child Development Center is our newest outpatient center. We are seeing a dramatic increase in autism need in our community, in our country. And this facility really helps focus in on those behavioral care. We also have occupational therapy, physical therapy, and speech therapy that support that behavior program. We do free autism screenings, and then we also have the applied behavior analysis treatment in that area. We utilize Early Start Denver Model, which is another peer-reviewed scientific support services there. Another service line, moving a little bit more into children and adults, family support services. We have, we support 179 families in this area statewide, and we have 72 families on the waitlist. So as you can see, there's lots of, lots of need and not as much ability there to support those. So we appreciate your support in helping meet those needs in our county. We've got a Pathways to Life Specialty School. This is a transition age, so children 16 to 21, helping them get ready for being an adult and learning daily independence skills, helping them learn job skills, just really getting them and giving them as many supports and skills as possible so that they can be productive, independent adults. We have currently 28 young adults enrolled in this program, and there are 12 currently in transition into adult services. So that's great when children can leave our services and be more independent. That really is, our end goal is to continue with supporting them, to not need us anymore, I guess. Adult Supported Employment. We currently help 90 individuals in Sioux Falls work out in the community. This is a goal for adult services, is to have folks have that meaning in their life and contribute to society by being excellent employees. So we have folks, they, we really look at their interest levels and help match them up with opportunities and employers. We have a great community. This program is overseen by the Department of Human Services as well. Our Adult Day Services. These are folks who live independently or live at home with their families. They come to our care in our Western Avenue facility. That, we did have to transition during COVID. That was one change this, last year, providing those services in the homes. We are slowly reopening that area and bringing houses in because they are with groups of people that they're with every day, and then slowly opening that up to more and more folks as more get the vaccination. We have currently 489 adults supported in the Adult Day Services Program. We also support adults in residential areas. So we have 39 homes in Sioux Falls. We hope that you don't recognize them. We'd like them to blend in with the neighborhood and be your typical great neighbor. We have 343 residents with another 146 that are supported in their own homes. So really, it's, the goal is to keep them as independent and as possible and living as on their own. We have 49 adults on our waitlist right now. And we did just open a new home on Hawthorne called the Continuum Home. That is for young adults transitioning into adult services. What we found there is that children receive a lot of support as kids and have a lot of support at school and homes. And then when they turn 21, somehow that support just, they don't need it anymore, which really is not the case. They just need different supports. And this home will have, has eight individuals who have intense behavioral needs. And so the staffing is a little higher than some of our other homes, but it helps them, independent skills is a primary focus of that. And then the facility, being that it is a new construction, was able to be built specifically to meet the needs of individuals. Sometimes we're modifying homes for wheelchairs or mobility devices. Behavioral challenges could be hard on walls and doors and woodwork, and just making, taking that into consideration as we build those homes. We're fortunate to have the opportunity to have that, a new home here. And we are working our second new home for next year up on North 4th Avenue. With our individuals that we support, our patient diagnoses, we have, on this graph, we have over 300 different individual diagnosis that we help support. And if you'll notice on the, would be the left-hand side, over a quarter of the individuals we support have three or more diagnosis. So it's very complex. We work in a lot of teams of individuals to help meet those needs and are fortunate to have a great health system in our city that helps complement the services as well. We, one thing we pride in is being able to provide services so families and individuals can get their care close to home. If there are several of our services that to get that level of care, you would need to go to Minneapolis, Omaha, or Denver. And for a lot of South Dakotans, we have two working parents, and we know that if families are able to stay close together, kids get better faster, and people have healthier, healthier lives if they can be close to families. So we're fortunate to be able to provide some of that continuum of that care closer to home and not be sending folks out of state. Some of the new things, since we were last presented to you, our Autism Child Development Center opened in March of 2020. Interesting time to open a new facility and service line. We are already out of space in that facility, programming children to receive that applied behavior analysis treatment. And it's crucial that children get that at a very early age to make the most progress so that they can be more independent and integrated into their homeschool districts. We have expanded our children's classrooms and our crisis capabilities at 26th Street. We are seeing as schools become more equipped with meeting needs, that we're getting the fringe, the harder children to support. And we've been able to expand some of our classrooms and our space to be able to meet those needs better for those children. We've also added 12 new traumatic brain injury specialists and expanded our traumatic brain injury care. Prior to this last year, if a child was in an accident, or an adult was in an accident and had a traumatic brain injury, the best care you could get was in Denver. So if you can imagine sending your loved one that far away to receive that intense care and those supports, we are really excited to be able to provide that to families right here. We also have started a collaborative partnership with Dakota State University and technology-based solutions for individuals to stay more independent. Our staff is really creative, and they just adapt things. If they see an individual needs something that would make them more independent, they just do it. While Dakota State came and did a tour and really have been working together, there's a few projects we've been working on independently, like battery size. If you imagine a child with a lot of equipment, their batteries are really big and they don't last very long. So we've been working on getting those smaller. Dakota State has been working on the actual battery, and we've been working on modifications to the, like the wheelchair in the child's equipment. Also, different sensors that go in a brace that will, if a child has self-injurious behavior, maybe they hit themselves when they hear a certain sound, or they see some trigger in their environment, or it gets too noisy. We have developed a brace that has sensors in it with work at South Dakota State University and Dakota State University to have sensors that will track their heartbeat, their perspiration, things that physically would alert them that they've hit a trigger, and it would slow, say their hand is gonna come up fast to their head. That brace slows that down so that staff have time to intervene and redirect that behavior so that that child stays healthier. And eventually, those behaviors decrease as the child is able to recognize. So super excited that technology can help make that kind of a difference in people's lives. We are also starting a collaborative partnership with the University of South Dakota, the School of Medicine, to produce more board-certified behavior analysts. These are the individuals, the therapists, that provide that applied behavior analysis. We do not have enough in our state, which is why we have such significant waitlists of 200 families waiting for autism evaluations and services. And we're excited to have the opportunity now. We don't have a program like that in South Dakota. So currently, the staff that we get certified have to leave the state for their schooling and their test. And then they, we hope they come back and, and work for us. So this is an opportunity to keep South Dakota students in South Dakota for very well-paying jobs. So we're excited to, the first class is being accepted in May, and will begin in the fall. So we're pleased about the partnerships across the state as well. Any questions, I guess, for- Any questions, I guess, for?
Questions, comments?
Chairman, sorry to belabor this, but what happens to adult autists, you know, after they've, you know, achieved majority, et cetera? Do, do they just throw them back in the lake?
No, so we really try to provide supports when children are young and growing. We do have some individuals who, some families are able to cope and really support their kids while they're little. But as they get to be teenagers and stronger and sometimes bigger than their parents, that's when they suddenly are like, oh my gosh, we need some support here. And so we do have some individuals that come to us in their teens, which is a harder place to start. But with the, usually it's the structure and the supports. Even with a short period of time, we've got one individual that, he's, he's just large and very strong, but he, within two years, has been able to be able to recognize his triggers, help them recognize the supports that they need. In adult services, we've got different homes that focus on, there's individuals, like our continuum home, that we know need a little bit extra support. In our last legislative session here, we're fortunate that Steve Watkins did very good lobbying and advocacy for supports for adults and was able to get that funding closer to what it actually costs to provide good supports for adults, particularly those with autism, because they tend to need more services. Yeah, so that's continuing to build the supports, families and people with autism need and giving them as much independence as we can.
Thank you. It looks like we're good. Great presentation. Thank you, Jessica. Somebody here, Tim Even here? Tim, okay, I was gonna guess. Humboldt Fire and Ambulance Presentation. Good morning.
Morning Commissioners, Tim Even with Humboldt Fire and Ambulance Service. Asked here this morning to just give you a, kind of a quick briefing of what we've been up to in the last, well, probably about a couple of years since I've been down, so. A little bit of background, our ambulance service has been serving the community of Humboldt and surrounding area for over fifty-five years now. It's my understanding that our ambulance service started out with a used hearse. So imagine calling nine-one-one or asking for help at that time and watching a hearse pull into your, your driveway. But currently, we're running a 2014 Lifeline Ambulance. And our department is a little unique in the county, is our fire and ambulance service is combined. We are not separate at all. That's the way we started out, and it's worked very well for us. Currently, we have twenty-nine members on the fire and ambulance service. We have five medics, one advanced EMT, and the balance made up of either EMTs or firemen or someone such as myself, and that is a firefighter-EMT combination. Over the past years, we've gotten five new members, which is a big deal for a town our size, just under six hundred people. Our two newest members, one of them right now is taking the Certified Firefighter Course, and the other is taking the Certified EMT Course. And the cost of that is roughly a thousand bucks, I think, to put somebody through the course right now. We have a member that has been on just a little over a year now that completed the EMT Course and has been with the department in good standing for a year. And with that, the county does have some money set aside through Emergency Management Office that what they, they do is, if they've been in good standing with the department, the county reimburses half of that money. So greatly appreciated. And we're working with Jason right now to see if we can get that individual a check here shortly, so appreciate that. And I did just last week, got another application for somebody who wants to be an EMT. So works there in town, and I told her, absolutely, we want you. So that's, that's some good things. The Humboldt Ambulance Service covers approximately two hundred and seventy square miles of western Minnehaha County, which is about a third of your county. There, we cover parts of ten townships, parts are all of ten townships out there. Typically, a call volume for us in a year, it was, you know, roughly two hundred and seventy-five calls. Well, last year, along with everything else, we saw a dramatic increase in call volume. We had, for our service, three hundred and forty calls, so about a twenty percent increase in call volume. We also serve the cities of Humboldt and Hartford. Currently, we're running twenty-four-seven is what we run for advanced life support with our medics. The medic gets paid, and obviously you folks help out with funding for that. But it is supported with a volunteer, at least one volunteer every call. So it's, it's not just the medic that's out there. There's, there's some of us that still run around and do it for nothing, I guess, so. We are mutual aid backup ambulance service for Salem, so we do get out to Salem, Canistota, and Montrose as well. We do cover a small portion of the eastern part of McCook County due to the natural boundaries of Lake Vermillion and the Vermillion River. It's just natural that it, we can get there a little bit quicker than Salem can make their way around something like that. One of our big things that we typically have every year, we have a fundraiser for our ambulance service and fire department. It's combined. We've been doing a steak supper and getting a group of people together for twenty years. Well, this year was the demise of that. We did not have it here at the beginning of February. Instead, we're just doing a cash raffle and trying to raise some money that way. Great support from the communities and also great support from businesses that it's just a cash raffle and they've been willing to step up and donate some cash. So we will make a little bit more money hopefully out of, when this is all done. What we're raising the money for this year, we're in the process, we got a new ambulance ordered. It was going to be here the first of March, it was going to be here a little bit later. Now it's mid-April, is what they're telling us, and that's coming in at a cost of about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So that's what we're out raising our money for right now. Other notable things, with the change in the state radio system coming at us here in 2023, all of our portable radios that we carry and all of our radios in our trucks, none of ours are upgradable. So we have to purchase new ones. And with the CAREZAC money through the city of Humboldt, we were able to get ten new digital radios. And we also got a matching grant through the South Dakota Department of Ag. We picked up two radios that way, so we bought one, got one. So we did get twelve new radios this year. Those things, by the time you get the chargers and the handheld mics and everything with it, they come in at a cost of about fifty-three hundred dollars apiece. So we got twelve of those, mostly all on grant money this year. So, and working on other grants right now for some other equipment that we need as well as more radios because they're, like I said, not cheap items. Trying to get a little bit ahead of the curve because we know what's coming at us here in another couple of years that we're going to have to have all that stuff in order to receive the calls and things of that nature. With the increase in call volume, our call types are changing. Law enforcement, it gets called to a lot of them anymore. It's, it's different out there, I'll say that. We work really close with Sheriff's Department. There's a lot of times that those folks might be first on scene. The ones that are trained as EMTs are, are a great help. That's, it's been a good program that they got going there. With the increase in call volume, of course, comes the increase in no pays as well as Medicare-Medicaid calls, and that you accept what they pay you. It doesn't matter what you send a bill for, you're getting a set amount. In the past year, with our three hundred and forty calls, we had over ten thousand five hundred volunteer hours put into this through our service. I know that number is probably just a little bit light even because yours truly doesn't write down all the meetings I go to, I know that. But it, it isn't unique to the Humboldt Ambulance Service, though, and Fire Department. All the, all the volunteer services in the county, you know, be it the volunteer, fire departments, or other ambulance services, they're all, they're volunteering just as much time as we are. So it's not like, you know, we're anything different. Those, it's kind of a unique group of people that will, you know, like I said, if your, if your phone rang at two in the morning and somebody said, hey, I need some help, most people probably wouldn't get out of bed and get dressed and go out on the interstate and see what's going on. There's a group of people out there that are doing that. So any way you can help them out is greatly appreciated there, too. In the past year, we've had mutually, or in the past years, we've had mutual aid training with Colton, Montrose, Canistota, and Parker, be it with their rescue squads and things of that nature. In 2020, we did not do anything. This year, we're looking to do something with Hartford. And then also at the last county chiefs meeting, we discussed getting the countywide, going to do something on a large scale, I guess, I'll say that. So working on some stuff there that we can hopefully get all the departments in the county together on that, so. With that, you know, I'd like to thank you for your support because frankly, we wouldn't be able to, we wouldn't be able to do it without you guys, with the support that you guys give us. So that is greatly appreciated. And like I say, I guess with the funding, the county is getting ALS coverage as well as an equipped ambulance and then volunteers that are hopping in and going along as well because, you know, it takes at least two to go, so. So I think it's, all in all, probably a pretty good return on investment. So with that, I guess, if you've got any questions, I'll try to answer them.
ALS, Advanced Life Support, more than just the basic.
Yeah, yep, yep. They're the ones that can, you know, start IVs and things of that nature. But so it's, it's been a great, great part of the community. I think most all of our calls now are advanced life support.
Comments?
Well, I have actually a couple of questions. One is, is the fundraiser over? Can you sell me a ticket?
I don't have them with me, but absolutely, I'll sell you. No, we haven't drawn yet. My, my master plan of, they said the ambulance would be here first of April, so I backed it up a month and a half, and I said, we'll draw mid-April.
I'm not paying for the whole ambulance, okay?
But I said I wanted the new ambulance there when we did our drawing, and now I was told that it's not going to be here in time.
What about fire calls? How many fire calls do you guys go on?
I should remember this because we just got done with township meetings. The number that sticks in my head from, I ran around, I think, seven township meetings on the first Tuesday. I think it was around a hundred and sixteen fire calls. Most of our fire calls anymore are medical. You know, do we have fire calls? Yes, but majority of calls now for the fire department are medical-related. And that's where, you know, be it in other small towns that we go to, their fire departments there with the rescue squad, and frankly, they have packaged up a patient and vitals are taken. You know, it's, it's not just the ambulance out there doing medical work. These volunteer fire departments are as well.
Final question. Did the legislature do anything about the state radio situation?
Not that I'm aware of. And maybe they have, and I shouldn't speak to something I don't know, but I will anyway. You know, with the change in that, it's, like I said, the cost of these radios is pretty expensive. That's where, when they opened up the CAREZAC money, that we could talk to the municipalities, and I know most of the municipalities helped out the, the services to start obtaining some of these radios because, like I said, we got to have them all for the portables that we have, which is, you know, we probably need another ten portables, so another fifty-three thousand dollars worth of radios we're going to have to buy and plus replace all the ones that are in the trucks. There is, there was a grant available through the state that we are going to receive, the one that, our ambulance is coming. The state said the EMS office will help with installing a radio in there. So I got to give them credit for doing that.
Commissioner Bender, do you have something?
Well, I just was curious, I was encouraged to hear about your new volunteers. And I was wondering if you had some wonderful tip that you could pass on to other people who are looking for new volunteers of your recruiting efforts.
I would say charms and charm and good looks, but that's not the case. So, no, that's part of the, being in a small community, I think. Everybody kind of recognizes things that need to be done. So if you see somebody around that shows interest, we can be persistent, I guess. And, and so, no, that's, when they, when they step up without having to hound somebody, it's, it's a great thing. And with that, I will say, many of you do know John Jardine. He retired here at the first of the year after forty years of service on our department. So he wore, I think, every hat you could in that place, so he'll be missed. But he, he got us off to, or we got a good department because of him, and so if you see him, tell him thanks.
Commissioner Benega.
Tim, do you have any idea how much money you guys spent this year because of the COVID-19 supplies and all the stuff that you normally wouldn't have bought?
You know, as far as the dollar amount, our, one of our medics that takes care of all the office work, she'd probably snap with an answer like that. Me, no. I, I don't have the number. I know there's been a lot of times we've been ordering extra supplies. One thing, the state EMS office will help out. I mean, for an ambulance service, they will get us, you know, be gloves, masks, things of that nature. I just ordered some stuff again last week, and that comes to us at no cost, so. Like I said, we, we look for the free stuff any place we can, so we, we stretch our dollars. But as far as a definite cost, no, I do not have that.
Definitely would be interested in that number if you could come up with it.
Yeah, I'll do some checking into it and see what I can come up with for you.
Thank you for what you do, and especially for all your support, all of your team, your people.
No, thank you for all that you guys do for us as well. Have a good day.
Thank you, Tim. All right, Tracy out in the hallway. Tracy Smith, Public Defender's Office. Are we coming online? And here's Tracy and Betsy. Morning.
Good morning. Tracy Smith and Betsy Doyle, Minnehaha County Public Defender's Office. Thank you. Last year, we served seven thousand seven hundred and forty individuals, which was a slight decrease from the number of people that we served in 2019. As each of you are aware, our appointments come from the courts based on their financial qualifications. Anyone who is facing a loss of liberty interest has a right to court-appointed counsel. Going to the next slide, some of the 2020 highlights. In 2020, we saw an eight percent decline in our caseloads as we ganged in efforts to divert as many vulnerable clients from jail to safe alternatives. Those would be treatment and alternative courts. Our juveniles decreased by forty-three point three-four percent. That would be partially because most of the clients that we saw, anyone charged with Class A, Class B, Class C, Class One or Two, basically, those are our major crimes. Those would be charged in adult court. That would be explained by a couple of things. The implications, most of our clients who are charged in juvenile court would be charged in adult court. Those could be some of the decision points there would be from arrest to prosecutions. The implications there could be in the higher cost to the court and to the county due to now us having to hire experts to try to transfer those cases back down to juvenile court. The other implications there would be the cost of hiring experts where required to put on evidence of their social history, their mental health history to show why those cases would be better served in juvenile court. Other implications would be that it waives confidentiality by having those cases charged out in adult court. We've had some of those cases that we've seen where the younger individual will, after the fact, come in front of the commission and ask to have those attorney fees set to civil lien or to have those attorney fees waived, some of those higher amounts. A lot of those expenses you see there are the cost of hiring those expert expenses. In juvenile court, which are confidential, the maximum penalty for, or the act, the maximum attorney fees are fifteen hundred dollars. Whereas in adult court, they're charged for those full expenses. So we do like to see those cases where they are juveniles. We would prefer to see those cases prosecuted in juvenile court. Some of the other 2020 highlights, we had thirty-one jury trials. Sixteen of those cases, if you could go back to the other slide, sorry. Sixteen of those 16 of those cases were clients that were acquitted of their charges, or jurors were unable to reach a verdict. The implication there would be, it shows how the quality of the representation that our clients are receiving. It also goes back to the earlier question of whether or not the decision points of cases, whether or not the charging levels are rather a result of an increase in violent crime, or whether or not the community is actually less safe. It also goes to the good job that the county is doing with programs such as the MacArthur Grant and the discussions that we've been having with the community programs such as the Race and Justice Committee, and whether or not we should continue to look at these programs, and whether or not these types of programs are helpful to making the community truly feel safe, and what we should be looking at as far as whether or not these truly higher crimes are what is needed. We also had as far as 469 service referrals through the Southeastern Behavioral Health Community Partnership. I know that Debbie was here a couple of weeks ago to talk about that partnership and how effective it is with our office. Now we can go to the next slide, I'm sorry.
Tracy, will you pull the microphone down a little bit?
I'm sorry.
Help us hear you better.
Our homicide numbers for 2020 had increased, and it's important to note the impact of what it creates for our office. In 2020, our office had 10, 10 new homicide cases that were charged out and that we were appointed to represent. With each homicide case that our office is appointed and representing, we appoint two attorneys from the office in order to tackle the discovery issues, the motion work, trial issues, and other things that come along with representing those cases. From 2020, we did have one case that was resolved in entirety. It ended up being a plea and a sentencing. It was resolved fairly quickly, within six months. One case ended up retaining a private counsel we withdrew off of. Ultimately, from 2020, our office still has eight of those cases pending. We've also had an additional three cases come in since 2021 began. Our office currently has 11 homicides pending at this point. As I stated, the homicide cases have two attorneys that are appointed to represent it. We always have at least one, sometimes two paralegals. And given the increased volume we've actually been appointing, or having a third attorney assigned, that's a newer attorney to help with kind of the busy work, to alleviate some of the caseload pressures from our more senior staff.
Crimes of violence, we saw an 8% increase in our simple assaults. It was kind of what I was alluding to in the previous slide, and a 52% decrease in disorderly conducts. We saw a 55% increase in our assaults on law enforcement, but a 24% decrease in our resisting arrest cases. We saw a 21% increase in our aggravated assault cases, and overall increase in our total felony offenses, a 10, increase of 10.58% increase, which shows, which is significant because it shows that even though our overall cases were going down, and our nonviolent offenses, our misdemeanor offenses were going down, our crimes of violence were going up.
About a decade ago, our office was the pilot program, or the pilot office, in order to defend or represent clients in an alternative court. That first alternative court was drug court. I'm sure this commission has heard much about that program over the past 10 years. Our office since then has been able to staff and be a part of representing clients, participating in other alternative courts. 2020 brought a fourth alternative court, Mental Health Court. Our office now staffs defense attorneys on four courts, drug court, DUI court, Veterans' Court, and Mental Health Court. The purposes of these courts is to help alleviate the congestion from the criminal justice system, and more than anything, provide services for people who are chronic addicts, chronic alcoholics, veterans who have a nexus between their criminal activity and their, their veteran service, and mental health, as we know, is very prevailing in this community. The defense attorney is a very integral part of the team. The team does not function without a defense attorney representing the interests of each particular, particular participant. In total, our office has eight attorneys that staff these courts. We have one attorney assigned as a lead attorney, and we have one attorney assigned as a backup attorney. In 2020, the hours that were spent in court averaged for the four courts an amount of 66.03 hours each month for the year. Those, that time or those hours does not include the time spent outside of staffing and outside of court, doing duties such as obtaining records, communicating with other staff members or team members, filling out applications, talking with clients and attorneys about potential participants in the future. These courts has, have been proven to have a great community effect. The methamphetamine cases last year are down 18% in our office. Over the years that drug court has been implemented, there has been a decrease in methamphetamine cases. There are multiple success stories of participants from each court, and it brings awareness of addiction and mental illness to the stakeholders and the community members. Overall, the total hours spent on all of the alternative courts in 2020 was 795.70. When we use that number to equate the total costs or the total benefits that the county is saving, that total amount with the billable hours totals 77,978.60 cents. One other thing to, I'm sorry, if we could go back to that last slide. One other thing to add, that since we've done this presentation, or since we created this, currently, our office does not receive any state funding from the UJS. Other counties, rural counties, do receive funding from UJS. Partly, my understanding is that funding is based on our pilot program, showing that it can be a success and the benefit that it could have to rural counties. Next year, in 2021, our office has made a formal request in order to get funding for each alternative court. We are hopeful that we will be able to receive that funding. The amount is yet to be determined, but we are in the works of trying to get additional funding from UJS in order to help staff these four alternative courts. COVID-19 has obviously brought a lot of dampers on the way that every office and every business runs. One thing that has been very detrimental to our office is the inability for training opportunities. Each year, we typically send three to five attorneys to a trial school in order to get them the basic skills when they first begin in our office. Last year, there was no trial school. This year, we are not finding any options for trial school either. So last year, we decided we did not want to put a complete halt on training. We put our heads together and realized that we have a number of senior staff in supervisory roles that have a lot of experience in trials, have a lot of experience in motions work, and we were able to conduct some in-house, in-house office trainings. We did a training on competency in navigating a course to protect the mentally ill in order to help attorneys spot issues and be more efficient in requesting evaluations, or finding alternatives to requesting evaluations in order to save costs to our office in the county. We did trainings for nonviolent and misdemeanor-type cases and offenses, and we also were able to focus on some trial skills training. We did bring in an outside, an outside trainer. His name is Terry Liggins. He does, he runs his own company called the Hurdle Life Coach Series. The training focuses for him on being trauma-informed. Being trauma-informed is important in order to be more efficient in, in operating our cases, to spot issues, to relate with clients, in order to get down to the bottom of certain issues that are plaguing them, and why they keep reoccurring in the criminal justice system. We had a three-point series where he was able to discuss with our office and have an open forum where we could ask questions. He had a very interesting life story. He has been involved in the criminal justice system and has seized, has seen multiple sides of that. We believe that our commitment to training during COVID-19 has been top-notch for what we had to work with.
Probably the hardest part when the pandemic first came to our office was navigating onboard training for our new attorneys. We had several who had started right after we were learning the importance of social distancing and working remotely. We are very grateful for our misdemeanor unit. Their cases were down 17%, as I've spoke about several times with our caseload being down. They worked really hard to work together to keep their clients safe and to work together. That was probably the hardest part of working together to continue training, as Betsy just spoke about, with wanting to keep working together, even though we weren't able to send them to trial school. We used a lot of our senior staff to be able to continue training and to continue to work remotely, continue to be able to keep their cases moving, and we're glad that their misdemeanors were down 17%. Looking ahead, as Betsy spoke about, we want to continue supporting our alternative courts as we have seen the significant benefit of having the alternative courts being part of the team for those programs. We also want to continue our partnership with Southeastern Behavioral Health. We believe there is many more opportunities to be able to expand that program. We also want to be able to continue discussions about expanding our services and working to reduce the reliance on locking people up in order to address what are really social services needs. We don't want to lock people up to keep them safe. And we want to keep working on an environment that's clean, safe, and practical so that our attorneys are able to work effectively. And so, I will stand by for any questions that you may have for Betsy and I.
Thank you. Questions? Commissioner Benega?
I just have one, Tracy or Betsy. The number that I was most surprised in is when you talk about meth cases are down by 18% with as much news and the number of things that we've seen happen in our community. Can you explain why your numbers are down?
The only thing that, from our perspective for 2020, is there were, they changed the different schedules for making arrests, so I don't know what effect that would have on our office. That would be the only thing as far as last year in 2020, looking at it. I know that the alternative courts have a huge impact on those as well, particularly mental illness is a lot of times correlated with substance use and abuse. Mental Health Court was implemented last year. The Drug Court has been up and running. With these alternative courts, I know that that has an impact in bringing down those overall cases. But aside from that, my only thought as we were discussing those numbers as well, was that I, we believe that the bond schedule had changed. I'm not sure how arrests were made different in the year of 2020 by city police. That would be the only considerations that we had.
The one other thing is, we count our cases based on closings and probably other entities. I'm, I can't speak for the state's attorney's office or law enforcement. They count cases probably based on arrests or prosecute, or charges outs, and, but I know that we count our cases based on closings. So with the changes in the bond schedules, which would delay cases within the courts, that would probably have impacted our numbers.
And, following up with that, there was a time period where jury trials were halted. There were time periods within the past year that they were halted for a period of time. When they did resume, priority was given for in custody clients, priority was given for more serious cases that had been pending longer. So, kind of piggybacking off of that, it could also be the case that some of the cases that we were appointed and opened last year are still currently pending.
My question is slide six. I don't know if you can get to slide number six, but I see the assault on law enforcement has a 55% increase directly coordinating with resisting, correlating, I guess, with resisting arrest taking a decrease. If an individual is resisting arrest and charged with that versus assaulting a law enforcement officer, which depending on, I think that's the judgment of that officer at the time of arrest to make that charge, or is that up to the state's attorney? You can answer that. But what's it mean to that individual? If I, if they're charged with the resisting arrest versus assaulting a law enforcement, what does that mean to them when they enter the system?
And that's one question where I think it would be worth taking a deeper dive, particularly giving the fact that juries are, are acquitting people, or where our trial numbers are the way that they are. I think a lot of that's based on decision points both with arrest and both with prosecution, because we know that we're seeing the decrease in our caseloads. We're also seeing the acquittals and where the jurors are not able to reach a verdict. To answer your question directly, the implications for our clients are higher bonds, so the jail numbers go up. It means the cases are staying in the system longer, because instead of being in magistrate court, they're now being charged in circuit court. So their cases are being longer in their system, their attorney fees are going up, and our expenses are going up, our need for more attorneys are going up, so our costs are going up.
But fewer, fewer of them are sticking because they can't get a jury to agree to the charge.
Correct.
Interesting. Okay. Commissioner Barth?
I appreciate your presentation. Does the, have we had many people charged on the medical marijuana thing, being as that's being, going forward to be less criminal? Last year, it was fully illegal. Did you have people charged with medical marijuana last year?
I, so medical marijuana, just a possession of medical marijuana would be charged as a misdemeanor currently, unless it was an amount greater than two ounces, or a person was alleged to have been selling or distributing it. I can't speak to those numbers, I'm sorry. We can, we can ask our misdemeanor team. But I do know that since the voters voted in November, there has been conversations with the state's attorney, and, and both sides have been trying to come to agreements that are reasonable. And so I, I think that the concern from, and the question prompted, both sides, the state and our office, are working towards coming to a common, reasonable resolution at this time, until there's more certainty with the law.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Heiburger, do you remember when we had, was it Senate Bill 70 or something, that, and, and they're talking about state funding being reduced because we showed that our policies worked, and so the other counties are getting paid by the state, and we're not getting paid by the state because we already did it? It's a little frustrating.
That's our specialty courts, correct?
No, it's, it's, it's a comprehensive thing we did to, Commissioner Heiburger?
You're putting me on the spot, but I think it had to, it had to do with the law change and what they counted your jail count originally, and we had already implemented a lot of the alternatives in Manyaha County, and so as we continued with what we were doing, and other ones added, their jail numbers changed. It's, it's a little complicated, but you're right. There was a, I don't know what those numbers are now as far as reimbursement, but other counties were getting money that we weren't getting because we were already doing the job before the law passed.
Showed that it worked, and then they rewarded counties that changed to our method. And since we were already doing it, we were left out.
I would, I would say what they were talking about earlier in the funding from the UJS is a little bit different than what you're discussing. The UJS money, we have talked to the UJS now, sent some correspondence with them, and I'm very, fairly confident that that money will flow down now, it's just a matter of it wasn't in their budget, and so we weren't getting it, and it was probably an oversight. But hopefully, it will go forward now, and we won't have these issues anymore for that particular item.
Thank you. Thank you for the work you do.
Thank you.
You bet. And hand in hand with the public defender is our public advocate, and we have Julie Hofer. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Julie Hofer, Director of the Public Advocate's Office. The Public Advocate's Office opened in 1999. We provide a legal representation to low-income people. people who are charged with crimes or otherwise qualify for court-appointed counsel. The primary function of the office is to represent clients with whom the Public Defender's Office has withdrawn or had a conflict of interest. And so the purpose of our office is to reduce the number of private attorneys that have to be hired by the court system. Our office consists of seven attorneys, including myself, two paralegals, and two legal office assistants. We are lucky to have an office that has many years of experience. Four of our attorneys average 20-plus years of experience in criminal defense. Our two paralegals both have worked for the county for over 20 years, so our office has, luckily has that experience. I just wanted to show you some of the numbers from last year. Like Tracy indicated in hers, the number of open files that we have went down almost to below 2,017 standards, but our closed cases went up. And I don't know what the reason for that is. When COVID hit, we all continued to work full-time. The courthouse continued to run. We were able to find innovative ways to hold court hearings through Zoom, ITV, so things were able to get done. I think some of the attorneys had more office time and were able to get these cases hammered out, but we closed a significantly amount more of cases in 2020 than in 2019. And so just looking at what our caseload consists of, our misdemeanors went up, as did our felonies, and that's basically what our office does. We have one attorney that's dedicated to abuse and neglect cases, and one attorney who's dedicated to habeas appeal and then also major felonies. And I think that number on there for the habeas and appeals is a bit misleading. Those are cases that can take years to resolve, so that attorney will often have a habeas case open for three to four years while it's working its way through the court system and able to be resolved. And the others would just consist of motions to revoke, order to show causes. Sometimes the judges will appoint us to petty offenses, although technically we probably shouldn't be, but if they're accompanying a felony or another misdemeanor, that's what will happen. So just looking, I put in, I know we've just discussed these guidelines before, looking at the numbers for closed cases, the guidelines would indicate the office should be staffed by 10 attorneys. I'm comfortable telling you that I think our seven attorneys are, while we work very hard, we don't feel overwhelmed and comfortable getting the case, the workload done. In terms of things that we've done this year, we've done, there's online training. We've done online training for the attorneys. We only have one attorney who would require, I guess, a trial school, but the older attorneys in the office have stepped up. Mark followed Erica around basically the first six months she was there, so gave her all of the training that she needed. And the other attorneys have worked in this field for many, many years. But we did do an online training through the NICDL regarding death penalty cases. COVID really changed things this year, but our office adapted. I think the court system did a great job of keeping everything running, socially-distanced jury trials. We continue to do those, and just looking forward to things getting back to a little more normal. So, any questions that you have?
Commissioner Bender?
I'm just, I'm curious, what, what parts of the changes that the court system implemented with technology, what parts of those do you think will stay post-COVID?
I would assume that they will keep the appearances through ITV, through Zoom, and that's helpful for people that are out of state. It makes it much easier for people that are in prison. Now we do the hearings. They don't want to transport in between the prisons and the jail because of the risk of spreading COVID, so now we do those hearings through Zoom. And I would assume that they'll keep that practice because it also comes down on transportation costs. And it, you know, if there was a, if there was a person in prison that said, no, I want to appear in person, I think the judge would take that into account and allow it, but I think that's going to continue. I know that they have not changed some parts of the bond schedule, so I think that's going to continue with the hopes of keeping the jail population down. But yeah, those are the two things I see staying.
And you're comfortable that that, those work well for your clients, those changes have been?
I think so. You know, if I had a client that said, I absolutely don't want to appear over Zoom, that was in the prison, then I would speak with the judge, but everyone has been fine with it. And as far as the bond schedules, that actually benefits our office because it's less people going into the jail. You know, they're ticketed and released, and then they have a court date, so it's a benefit to them.
Thank you.
Commissioner Barth?
So with the ticketed and released plan, which is obviously saving, you know, crowding the jail and stuff, is there a lot, a huge increase in the amount of did not appear or failure to appear?
There has been. That's one of the problems. And we've talked about, in our meetings with the MacArthur Foundation, you know, different ways to try and resolve that. I think Erin even said, like, let's have a day where it's just like free warrant day. You come in and you get your warrant and you get a, you know, resolved, and you get a court date. But there definitely has been an increase in failing to appear, and not just the people that are, you know, cited and released. Like, I want to say, last week I was in arraignments, and probably half the people that were supposed to be there were there, so.
What is the penalty for failure to appear?
It's a class six felony, up to two years in prison and/or a $4,000 fine. But, you know, there used to be, the state used to charge them out quite a bit. They haven't been lately, and I think there's been a reduction in failures to appear because we've changed how we do our cases. We used to show up for a, what would be called a pre-trial conference for our felony, and then let the judge know, oh, it's going to be a plea today or we want a trial. Now all of that is just done through email. There's no actual court appearance. So if a client misses a deadline, it's not a failure to appear charge. Any other questions?
Thank you very much, Julie. Appreciate you being here.
Right, thank you.
All righty, that concludes our briefings. We'll move on to 16 on our agenda. Consider a motion to authorize the Sheriff's Office to purchase five Ford Interceptor utility vehicles through the 2021 City of Sioux Falls bid in the amount of $170,235. Captain Bosman, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Joe Bosman with the Sheriff's Office. This morning I have in front of you a request for our Sheriff's Office to utilize our approved 2021 budgeted funds to purchase five Ford Interceptor utility vehicles. Kind of look like the Ford Explorer is the vehicles that we've been getting for our police vehicles. Generally, every year I always compare the state bid versus the City of Sioux Falls bid to make sure that the county is getting the best deal for the vehicles, that we can stretch our dollars. This year, the City of Sioux Falls, we're really thrilled to have them, that the award winner is the Sioux Falls Ford. This is kind of a, great that we have a local dealer that we can piggyback off the City of Sioux Falls bid with. I contacted Sioux Falls Ford, more than happy to extend that same bid pricing to Minnehaha County off the City of Sioux Falls bid, with the vehicle and the additional options, which additional options is more or less key fobs, rear sensing, so that way they don't back up into something, putting a spotlight on the vehicle, some minimal basic need, safety type of upgrades. The cost of each vehicle comes around a little over $34,000. Times five, brings us up to the $172,35.
Questions? Motion?
Motion to approve, but I do have a question.
I'll second that.
Have we ever considered, like Tesla's electric vehicles? They're faster, they now have bigger SUV style. I know they're probably more expensive, but we're not going to be driving 500 miles on a tank, so have we ever considered that?
It's something that's on our radar. I do know that Ford has introduced the same vehicle model, but in a hybrid fashion. It costs around $3,500 to $4,000 more per vehicle, but they claim that you might see some fuel savings too, but that depends on eight-hour shifts, 12-hour shifts, the amount of driving. We have a very rural area, so our guys are not always idling a lot, whereas that's where you will see your fuel savings if you're parked and it switches to battery, and it can save that fuel, whereas we're driving from Del Rapids to Garrettson or Crooks to Humboldt, and so there's a lot of fuel usage that's used there. But I do agree, Commissioner Barth, that it is something that is, the trends are going that way for even law enforcement vehicles to monitor as well.
I made a motion. Yep, we have a motion in a second. Call the roll.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Consider a resolution to remove covenant language from the gravel pit warranty deed and rescinding resolution MC 20-78. Craig Dewey here?
Thank you.
Are Eric going to do this? I'm sorry.
Craig's supposed to be on Zoom.
Oh, okay.
He might have to.
Smoke them if you got them.
Back to the gravel pit, Craig.
So the gravel pit sale is scheduled to be closed next week on Tuesday, March 30th at 9:00 a.m. Last December, some initial legal review was conducted about inserting covenant language into the deed for the gravel pit. We have a new chief civil state's attorney now who has some experience and more extensive knowledge in real estate and had recommended a different course, believing that existing statute offers the most adequate protections for the continued operation of the gravel pit. He is recommending removing that covenant language, just to make sure, because the whole point of putting that in was to make sure that the sheriff was comfortable as well with the sale. And in conversations with the sheriff, the sheriff is comfortable with what Eric Boge is recommending. And so the resolution before you is more just of a straightforward resolution to rescind that initial resolution that you passed back in December. I'd be happy to answer any additional questions about that, but again, this would make sure that the deed would be in a position to close for the sale on Tuesday.
Commissioner Bender?
So I just want to make sure, I'm happy to make a motion. I just want to make the right motion. So you need a motion to rescind the existing resolution, MC 20-78, and replace it with the resolution in front of us?
Correct.
Is that what I'm looking for? That's my motion.
Second?
I have a question.
No, that's not my motion. I've got a different motion, apparently.
The new resolution does all of that, so you're just adopting the new resolution. So it does exactly what Craig just highlighted.
Okay.
It's all in the adoption of the new motion, which rescinds the other one. So if you adopt the new motion or new resolution, it does everything that Craig just explained.
Okay. Even better.
Thank you, Eric.
My question is, the purchaser of the property bought the land with that covenant attached to it. Have they agreed to the terms of changing this then, and do they have to? And by us doing this, are we making a material change to that purchase agreement?
It hasn't closed yet, so I think that this is, this will be the language that will be in the deed.
Yes, if this resolution was passed, then this would be the deed that would be put forward for the sale.
It's great to try to communicate with somebody who has a mask on, and all you're seeing is their eyes. I would invite the state's attorney to come forward and help us all understand this.
Thank you, Commissioners. If you, again, Eric Boge, Assistant or Deputy State's Attorney, if you look at the actual language of the resolution that I prepared, you'll see in there that it references the fact that the purchase agreement that the buyer signed on the day of the purchase actually has the language that I recommended at that time. I was unaware at the time I drafted the purchase agreement that you had previously adopted the resolution that I'm recommending that you rescind today, because the state statutes already protect gun shooting ranges, or gun sport shooting ranges, so that those protections are already in place, which is why we didn't need that restrictive covenant on the deed itself. Statute gives us a lot more authority and punch than restricted covenant would, so.
Thank you for that explanation.
That's very helpful.
Commissioner Heiburger?
We just have Olivia repeat what she has for the motion, since we just kind of like went all the way around to make sure we have it right.
Yeah. Essentially, the motion will be to approve resolution MC 21 dash, and then I'll sign the resolution number later, which is a resolution to remove covenant language from the gravel pit warranty deed and rescinding resolution 20-78.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
We have a motion in a second. We all understand it. Call the roll.
Just a quick point. At the bottom of this document, there's an original signature of Olivia Larson, soon to be a collector's item for those of us here at the county.
It'll still be valid on March 30th, though, so we'll be good. Okay. Call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye, motion carries. Authorize chair to sign an agreement with the USD School of Medicine, Family Medicine for Community Engagement Services. Carol?
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Muller, Commission Office. I actually would ask for a delay on that because USD is still doing some reviews on that language, so we're just gonna, instead of, if there's a potential change, which I'm not expecting, but we would just ask for a delay on that, is what we would ask for.
Do we have a date with that we want to delay it to, or we just want to pull it for now?
Will we have it in two, two weeks? We hope to have it in two weeks.
So that would be the?
April 6th.
April 6th meeting?
You certainly can.
Okay. So do we need a motion to delay that?
That's my motion.
Second?
Motion to delay till April 6th. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. All right. Thank you, Carol. Now we're looking for a motion to authorize a chair to sign the following agreements. An agreement between Minnehaha County and South Dakota Urban Indian Health to provide culturally relevant clinical mental health and substance use services.
Thank you, Commissioner. Last week, you had the opportunity to hear from South Dakota Urban Indian Health about the work that they will be doing underneath the MacArthur Grant, and this is the agreement that formalizes that relationship for all that you had a chance to go through and hear. Erin Sertzka is here. I know that we have somebody from Urban Indian Health in case you have any additional questions. You had a great opportunity and some good discussion last week as to what's all happening underneath MacArthur.
Questions? Erin, did you have anything you wanted to add? No? Okay.
To approve the agreement between Minnehaha County and South Dakota Urban Indian Health to provide
Second.
cultural relevance.
And so on and so on. So I have a motion in a second. This is a, not a roll call vote, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. A second is a memorandum of understanding between Minnehaha County and Think 3D to establish a Leaders of Tomorrow program.
Correct. Again, last week you had a chance. Tamian was here from Think 3D, did a great presentation, talking about how they're going to be involved in a leadership training program, and this is the agreement that will formalize this document.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Carol. We'll move in now to a discussion to consider the elimination of future commission meeting dates. So late last year, the decision was made to not have meetings on the second and those, every third month, basically, the fifth Tuesday of the month, just to maintain social distancing for staff work and so on and so forth. We've done that now through the end of March. The Commissioner Heiburger and myself have had the discussion. Our thoughts are, with the rest of the commission's approval, to continue that same business plan through the second and third quarters, basically to October 1st at this point. So, open for discussion.
I like the idea also, but I, if Melinda was here, I'd ask her how many people showed up on the wrong week.
I'm not aware that any, but eh, once. We did have once somebody showed up.
Okay.
And you dealt, you addressed that public input person by a phone call.
Okay.
A couple of weeks ago. Yes. That's the only one that I'm aware of.
I would also say, yesterday when we talked about continuing until the 1st of October, that we would discuss it again the first part of September, so that gives the staff and the auditors a chance if we decide to continue or we decide to quit, so.
And we have the state convention in And we have the state convention in September, right?
Correct.
Yeah. And, you know, Commissioner Heiburger and I were just at state county officials meetings. As far as we know, we are the only county that meets every Tuesday. Most, some counties meet once a month, several meet every other week, you know, the first and third. So we have more county commission meetings here than any other county does. And just because we don't have county commission meetings doesn't mean we're not working. We all have numerous. I've counted 14 different assignments that I have to different departments and groups in the county. So there's still a lot going on. Any opposition to that? Commissioner Benega?
I have a question. You know, there was some conversation with the auditor's office about timing and getting things processed on time if we in fact missed a meeting. Is that still a concern?
We talked to Commissioner Heiburger and Commissioner Karski both, both reached out to the auditor.
He said it was, he said he was fine with it as long as we just gave him a little bit of, that's why we would rediscuss the first part of September before it ended or whatever in October, just to give him enough time to make those changes. But he said it wasn't an issue. That was my understanding.
Yeah, he thanked me for the call and we had a discussion on it. He said, as long as we know moving forward what we're going to do, and I'd say even before September, maybe even in August, that we give them, you know, that we have this discussion again.
I, if I can interject, Commissioner?
Please.
I wouldn't even discourage you from saying, we're going to do it through the end of the year. And then in August and September, you evaluate for what you want to do for 2022 and then everybody's able to set that annual calendar. So I would just throw that out as one option for consideration.
We kind of looked at September, just didn't want to go too long, but I sure am okay with through the end of the year. But discussion, comments, thoughts?
I think I said last week that I, or last time we talked about this, that I was ambivalent about doing this. But I'm certainly not opposed to it. And I think we've had a trial, I mean, we've had kind of a track record now. COVID kind of imposed in some respects the schedule on us. So we've been able to get a rhythm and see how it works. So I don't have, I mean, if we're going to do it through, you know, the next two quarters, I don't see any reason not to just do it through the end of the year. We can always change it if we decide not to. But it gives people some direction as to where we're going.
I don't see anybody vehemently disagreeing, so thank you for that input, Carol. And I think that's good. Moving forward, that's where we're gonna, gonna go then. So Commissioner and Heiburger and I, we, on Monday mornings, we have a video Zoom call with Carol just to make sure that things are going well. So we have, we put aside an hour every Monday just to have that meeting anyway. So Olivia.
A clarification question for the purposes of the minutes. Is your direction then to go on through the end of the year? Or am I listing that it's through October?
End of the year.
Okay, thank you.
So, okay. All righty, I'm moving on then to liaison reports. Commissioners, liaison reports. Commissioner Bender.
Not sure this really qualifies, but I will tell you that yesterday, one of the really fun things about being a commissioner is you get to do things you would never otherwise do. And yesterday I was over here working, kind of going through the admin building to, as we were trying to plan as to, you know, what a refresh might look like. And Mark Krins offered to take me through the chiller. So we went down under Dakota Avenue and walked through the chillers and saw the new chillers over there. It is, it is amazing to see what it takes to operate a heat and cool facility, a campus like we have. And I just wanted to give a shout out to Mark and his whole crew because they were all busy working over there. And it was, it was very, very interesting and so much that we take for granted, just having regular temperatures as we work. And they're all responsible for that. So thank them.
All righty, Commissioner Heiburger.
As Dean said, we went to SDACC convention this last couple, this last week. We had, I had three days. I think Dean had two, no, Dean had three days too. We had Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. We were there for meetings. I apologize for getting my, not getting my notes together for today, but I will tell you that the agenda was much better than it looked on paper. And I think there was a lot to learn and it was well attended. There were about 100 commissioners there, plus a lot of elected officials, I think 80 to 90 elected officials for their part of the meeting. I think there was a lot of really good educational things. They had excellent speakers and so was definitely worth my time. So.
I'll concur on that. Commissioner Barth.
So last night, Planning and Zoning met in this room. And I would point out that Eric and Tony were both there till 10 o'clock along with me. And Shannon was there, but not till 10 o'clock. One of the items was the board of adjustment for the, an area just west of the Del Rapids interchange. And we voted against giving the, Mr. Brown the adjustment to build in the right way, so to speak. And that's, his alternative at this point is to go to court or to perhaps throw a different proposal at us. You know, he said that moving one of his existing buildings, the foundation was $100,000 already. And so clearly, you know, 20 years from now, when, when they need to move, it's going to cost a pretty penny. We also approved expansion of the Bowdine Dairy. And they're going to have methane digesters installed there, which will apparently be some kind of dome thing, which goes down 15 feet underground. So it's going to look like a Martian base. Then we, we, let's see here. We had a gravel pit for Sukup. We approved. We, and you know what? There was not very much opposition to any of this stuff. We, there's the equestrian development on, and I, I think that it's going to be coming to this body. And I think we denied it, but it'll be, was automatically going to come to us anyway. And basically what they had there is a six acre lot that we had approved previously. They're going to subdivide it into three lots. And so in effect, we're creating eligibilities, which rubbed some of us wrong. But they have another large acreage there that they say they will never subdivide. And the internal area around the horse barn, they say they will never build inside there. But who knows what will happen in 70 years.
Never say never.
So anyway, other than that, again, Eric and Tony were working till 10:00. And I did get my second shot last Wednesday.
Congratulations.
We all feel safer. All right. Thank you, Commissioner. New business? Old business? Do we have some old business that I'm missing?
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
We talked, we talked yesterday about rescinding the COVID emergency resolution that we had. And just to bring, just, we decided we should probably at least let you know so you could look at it again. And it'll be on the agenda probably maybe for our next meeting. It's the one that gave the chairman more responsibility and more latitude to do things. And so we decided it was time to take it out.
Yep. We approved it with no end date, so we're basically looking to modify it to have an end date.
Can the chairman handle that kind of responsibility?
Pardon me?
Nothing. I'm just.
That's why we're going to rescind it. Yes. All righty. No other old business. All righty, we are going to look for a motion to recess.
That's my motion.
Second.
Second. And we're going to have a quick recess, five minutes. And we'll come back in.